Good evening, this is the Coeur d'Alene Planning and Zoning Commission, and this is our July meeting. It's Tuesday, July 14th, 2015. Shannon, would you do the roll call, please?
Jordan.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
Ingalls.
Here.
Luttrell.
Here.
Messina.
Here.
Rumppler.
Here.
Ward.
Here. Okay, thank you. Next, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have approval of minutes, excuse me, from the June 3rd, East Sherman Workshop, the June 9th Planning Commission meeting, the June 8th, 2015, East Sherman Workshop. Do we need a motion for each one, or can we lump it all together?
Should be fine if two did at all as one.
Great, thank you.
I've read them, and I think they're acceptable. I'd make a motion to approve all three.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ingalls, and that was Ward that did the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the minutes are approved. All right, now, this is the time for public comments, and this would be if anybody would like to address the commission, and this would be about items of a general nature. If you're here because of a hearing tonight, then there'll be some time at the hearing for public testimony.
Mr. Jordan, could you speak up, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll try and do that.
You're prepared here.
Okay. Maybe you can turn the sound up a little bit. Okay, where was I here? All right, staff comments.
Okay, good evening, commissioners, I have a few comments for you. We are working on scheduling interviews for our vacant planner position, so that'll take place, we believe, the last week of July. The East Sherman Avenue, those, the two town hall meetings were very successful. We're working on summarizing the data, and there is an opportunity this Thursday at Riverstone Park with the Coeur d'Alene 2030 Annual Celebration for people to vote on their favorite EZ wins. So, that's a great opportunity for people to provide more input. Shawn Holm, our planner, attended the Gizmo City Planner Summer Camp class last week, and got some of the kids' input, ages six to nine, on East Sherman. That was fun, and talked to them about the history of Coeur d'Alene and planning. The Design Review Commission has requested a joint workshop with Planning Commission to talk about parking and floor area ratio, other things, so I'll be reaching out to you to find out what times and days are the best for both commissions, so we can get that scheduled. And then, lastly, the August agenda, we currently have one item, it's a special use permit request.
All right. Thanks, Hillary. How soon does Design Review want to meet? I think we have a couple of Design Review people here. Do you want to try and pull something together this summer?
Yes.
What are you thinking for urgency?
My thinking is it's fairly important, and certainly sometime in August.
We want to try and, if we only have one hearing in August, do we want to try and put, you know, put that together with that, or is this kind of just a workshop that, I guess this isn't really a TV kind of thing, so this should be a separate workshop, shouldn't it?
Well, we could have the same evening, we'd have to recess and then probably rearrange the tables, and we could set it up that way, if that works for Design Review Commission, and if the Planning Commission's okay with that.
Yeah, what night is that in August?
I believe it's the 14th.
14th.
The 11th, August 11th.
11th?
No.
I might not be here that time.
Okay.
It just doesn't seem to happen, but I think I might be out of town, I'm not sure yet.
Okay. One thought would be how mu, what's the, do we know what the agenda for that night? If we were really loaded up with planning stuff that night, it might not be a good night.
You said one hearing?
One hearing.
There's just one, right. So, the September one is stacking up with more, so we thought that would not be a good night. So, the August one could be a possibility, where we could try and find a different day and time that works for everyone.
Sometimes we meet, as a commission, not in the evening, but noon. Is this something we could do, in this case, and both for the, whatever, public key, sort of, might, items before, on planning, and then also Design Review?
Absolutely, and the Design Review Commission does meet on Thursdays at noon, so if we could do an off week, I think that time would work, if that works for the Planning Commission.
How does that sound?
I'm kind of both of them, so it really doesn't make any difference.
Just put some dates out, and see who, majority.
Yeah, whatever you guys.
Yeah, when is their meeting in August?
We don't have a such schedule at this time, we'll wait for the applicant to come forward with updated materials and schedule it.
Mr. Chair, it seems pretty important that Tom be there, to work around your schedule, both you and John, because you're, you're on both of them.
Yeah, my plans for August, I'm not quite sure what I'm doing yet, and that's my problem. So, why don't we, could be the earlier part of August, or the later part of August, not the first, second week of August, something like that.
Well, why don't you come up with something in the earlier part of August, and maybe check with Design Review, and then we can coordinate through email?
We could do a doodle poll, and send out some, send that, a link to everyone, and you can participate that way, I think, with different dates and times.
And that gives you adequate time for staff to prepare whatever it is we have to discuss?
It should, I think largely it'll just be, I think, discussion initially, we'll bring forward the standards, existing standards, and then allow dialogue.
Great. Okay, anything else?
That's all.
All right, thanks. Any, do we have any commissioner comments of a general nature? All right. Okay, we have one administrative item tonight. The applicant is Dick Stauffer. This is a request to extend, to extend the approval for Lilac Glen. This is an extension of SP-4-14, and S-6-14, and PUD-3-14. Does any commissioner have a conflict on this one? All right. Who's, who's doing this? Okay.
So, a pretty straightforward request, commissioners, Dick Stauffer with Miller Stauffer Architects is requesting a 12-month extension of the Planning Commission's preliminary plat subdivision, planned unit development, and special use permit approvals for Lilac Glen on behalf of the Larry Fluit Revocable Trust. So, on June 10th of 2014, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on those items, the annexation, zone change, preliminary plat subdivision, and plan, planned unit development, and special use permit, and the requests were all approved by a 4-0 vote. So, the representatives have submitted a letter requesting this extension because of situations that have arisen, that have made it difficult for them to proceed in a timely manner, and so they are asking that the commission extend this for one year, so that they can proceed, and some of those delays were due to dealings with ITD and the Army Corps of Engineers. And they intend to have final engineer drawings, sewer water, and streets for the city engineers sometime this fall. And if the Planning Commission does not approve this request, then these approvals would terminate in July 22nd of this year. So, the alternatives for the commission are that the commission may by motion grant a 12-month extension of the preliminary plat subdivision, planned unit development, and special use permit to July 14th, 2016, or the commission may by motion deny the extension. And the, if denied, the items expire, and the applicant must reapply. And all approved conditions still apply to Lilac Glen. The applicant is also here this evening, if you have questions.
Okay, any questions of Hillary, or does anyone request the applicant come forward? Is anyone prepared to make a motion?
I, I would, I'd like to make a comment, and then maybe a motion, but, you know, Warren Wilson, our deputy city attorney, and I, in a previous life, kind of had the opportunity to recraft this ordinance, and we learned, you know, years ago, that, you know, it's very difficult, even in the best of times, you know, to get, as a property owner, developer, to get, you know, dirt moving in 12 months, even when things go perfectly. So, I think it was the intent, you know, with the building community, public input, the city council voted to, you know, we authored a staff report that allowed for five separate 12-month extensions, recognizing that the flexibility really needs to be there. And it, as I understand it, you know, each of the five-year, five one-year extensions, each extension would have to be voted on, so this is just a one more year. So, I, I think it's absolutely needed, in this case, certainly understandable that, you know, the complications involved. So, I would motion that we grant an extension for Lilac Lan, Lane for one, one year.
Okay, motion by Ingalls.
Second.
Second by Luttrell, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so that's, that's approved unanimously, the extension for SP-4-14, S-6-14, and PUD-3-14. Thank you, Ward. All right, we have two public hearings tonight, these are both quasi-judicial, and, let's see, Timber Lane and Fruitland Lane. As I mentioned, these are quasi-judicial, the staff will begin by doing a report, and then the applicant will come forward. The applicant has up to 30 minutes to make their presentation, if they need that long, and then we'll take testimony from the public, and each member of the public will have five minutes, and then there'll be some time for rebuttal at the end. The first public hearing is, the applicant is Martin Unruh, 1020 East Timber Lane, a proposed zone change from R3 to R8 residential. This is quasi-judicial, this is ZC-2-15. Does any member have a potential conflict to declare? Okay, seeing none. Tammy, I'll let you go ahead with the staff report.
Thank you. So, this evening, we do have a request for a zone change from R3 to R8. It's a plus or minus 2.05, excuse me, 2.05 acre parcel on the south side of Timber Lane and east of North Honeysuckle Drive. The applicant is Martin Unruh. And before I get started, I do want to make a clarification. We added an additional note in your staff report on page one. Friday afternoon, we had been given a call from a neighboring resident just questioning which portion was requesting the zone change, and after looking into it a little, we did come to the conclusion that it is both lots 15 and 16, and that the legal that went out to the paper and to the neighboring residence was correct. So, we just wanted to clarify that. So, this is an aerial photo of the site, and outlined in the yellow is the subject property. This portion is vacant, and there's a single-family dwelling unit currently on this site. The applicant may or may not remove it, he's not quite sure at this time. This is a photo of the subject property, looking southeast on Timber Lane toward the subject property, and this is the opposite side, where you can see the single-family dwelling unit, and this is the vacant portion. Another site photo, looking northwest, and this is from Day Road, looking toward the single-family, and this is the other portion that's vacant. So, as far as prior land use, land use actions, in 1982, a zone change was approved for the subject property, as noted in your staff report on page two, that was a map, and that subject property and some neighboring properties were all part of a zone change, approved by the Planning Commission and the city council, and the request at that time was R8 to R3. So, I'll go through all four of the findings this evening. And the first required finding, that the proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan policies, and the subject property is within the city limits, and it's designated as Northeast Prairie Stable Established. So, on page three of your staff report, it says Northeast Prairie Today is comprised of a variety of zoning districts with major, with the majority of residential density at 3 to 8.1 acres. This is the subject property, noted on the map, and it does fall within this purple area, which is stable established. Northeast Tomorrow is typically a stable established housing area with a mix of zoning districts. Majority of the area has been developed, and special care should be given to the areas that remain, such as the Nettleton Gulch area, protecting the beauty and value of the hillside and wetlands. And I included the characteristics of the Northeast Prairie neighborhoods in your staff report, as well as the comprehensive plans, goals, and objectives. So, the next finding, finding B9, that public facilities and utilities are, are not available and adequate for the proposed use. So, stormwater, a stormwater management plan will be submitted and approved prior to any construction and activity on the site. The applicant will be required to include a stormwater management plan with any building permit supplemental for the subject property. Streets, the subject property is bordered by Timber Lane on the north, and Day Road on the south. Should development on the subject property occur, the area will currently require, will be required to provide an easement and dedicated as actual right-of-way to the city. At the time of the site development, both road frenzies will be required to be approved to the city's standards. Then, as far as water department, and we did get some concerns from the neighbors about the water. The water is currently served by Hoffman Water Association. I spoke with Terry Pickle from the water department. The city does have a main across the street, but the city cannot serve them unless the Hoffman Water Association releases them from that district. Wastewater stated that they don't have any objections to the proposed zone change. The public sewer main is located adjacent to the subject property's northern and southern property lines, and based on the proposed use, the wastewater utility presently has the capacity and willingness to serve the property. And the fire department will ensure that the design of any proposal meets mandated safety requirements for the city and its residents. Finding B10, that the physical characteristics of the site make or do not make it suitable for the request at this time. And as I mentioned, there's a single-family dwelling unit on one of the lots, and the other lot just to the west of that is a vacant site, and it's a two-acre site. So, the subject property is flat with no topographical issues. Finding B11, that the proposal would or would not adversely affect the surrounding neighboring properties with regard to traffic, neighborhood character, and/or existing land uses. Although there's no proposed use at this time, requested for the zone change, it could generate additional traffic. So, Gordon, Chris Bates in the engineering department submitted his comments, and he said, "The ITE Traffic Generation Manual would generate 9.55 trips per day for single-family, 6.65 trips for multifamily, or pocket-type housing. Therefore, it could, the number of daily trips could range from 19 to 100, depending on the extent of the development, whether it be two residences, residences, or 15. Any change in use and related traffic impacts would be evaluated prior to issuance of a building permit." And again, the neighborhood character was in your staff report, and it does fall within the Northeast Prairie portion of the comprehensive plan. This is a generalized land use map. The yellow indicates single-family, and this is vacant. You've got a variety of different housing types in this area. You've got some, it looks to be what we used to call, like a pocket housing development in this area, and then in this area, and some duplexes around here, as well as single-families and mobile home. And this is a zoning map. The property, the subject property is currently R3, and this is R3, and all of these properties are still zoned R3. The other ones are zoned R8. And as far as traffic, I mentioned that, and the increased amount of traffic generated, if they were to develop it at a later date, is noted in your staff report. And at this time, the applicant does intend just to change the zoning, so it would maximize what his, you know, if he was going to sell it at a later date. So, as far as the R3 zoning district, minimum lot size is 11,500 for a single-family, and the R8 zoning district, which is the proposed zoning, minimum lot size is 5,500 square feet for dwelling units for single-family and pocket housing. There are no proposed conditions with this request. And I also wanted to make a note that, because this, if it were zoned to R8, minimum lot size is the 5,500. 5,500 is required for a single-family, pocket housing is 5,500 as well. So, they could potentially have up to 16 units on that property, should the zone change be approved, and they, if they decided to do pocket housing residential development. And that's the end of my presentation, if you have any questions, and the applicant is also here.
Yeah, Tammy, a question on page nine of your staff report. I think this is kind of a big, big issue for this one tonight, I suspect, and in your staff report, it says that approval of this zone change request would intensify the potential use of the property, not just the density, but the use. And so, to make sure I understand your staff report correctly, in R3, as it stands now, it's really primarily single-family. If this goes forward to R8, it opens the door by right, just by a building permit, for duplex housing and pocket housing, correct?
That's correct.
And also, if it is approved at R8, with a special use permit, granted, they would have to come back, but with a special use permit in R8, the door would be open for childcare, boarding house, juvenile offenders facility, bed and breakfast, group dwellings, correct?
That's correct. They'd have to come to the Planning Commission and request an approval of a special use permit for one of those uses, as noted in the staff report.
Where in R3, you, you can't even come forward with a special use permit?
The items listed on page nine, under special use permit in the R3 zoning district, are the only ones that would be permitted, as far as coming forward with a request.
So, and again, for clarity, without, even without a special use permit, if this commission approves R8, it would open the door for duplex housing? It would open the door for pocket housing?
By right, yes.
Thank you.
Tammy, you show that it was bracketed, though, by R8 zoning.
Correct.
Okay.
Question for staff, Tam, oh, sorry. Question for you, Tammy. On duplexing, housing, if we're limited to R8, 16 units, does that mean they can have 16 duplexes, or eight duplexes? Are, is the duplexes divided by units, or is it divided by?
It would be a unit, so you could potentially have 16 units, so it would be eight duplexes, if that's how they chose to do it. The configuration of pocket housing could be arranged differently, so it just depends how they decided to set it up.
But the defining number is 16.
That's potentially what they could have. They would also have to provide for fire department's requirements, you know, as far as utilities, parking, and those types of things, and parking is triggered by the number of bedrooms per unit, so all of those things could change potentially how many they could put in there, depending on their design.
I just wanted to get clarification for the commission, so they understand it is 16 units, and it isn't 16, let's say, buildings, and then it multiplies itself out.
I think the only way they'd get 16 units is to do pocket housing, you'd never be able to subdivide it with 16 units.
No, you got parking, and green space, and swales, and...
Right-of-way, a lot of giveaways.
Any other questions of staff? I've got a quick question, Tam, you jogged my memory. Are we still thinking about a workshop sometime for some potential revisions in the pocket housing ordinance? Okay, so that's on the horizon somewhere. All right, thank you. Okay, is the applicant here? Come on up, sir. Step up to the podium there where Tammy was, and then, I need you to state your name and address, and for you, as well as the members of the public that come up here tonight, since this is a quasi-judicial hearing, I'll need to swear you in after you state your name. So, go ahead.
I'm Martin Unruh.
Okay.
I live at 54299 North Old Highway 95, Athol.
Okay, and you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I did.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I recently acquired the property, and when I got it, I was told it was R8, but it's not, and so, that's why I'm here today. It's pretty much surrounded by R8 zoning, and, you know, my, my personal feelings are that, you know, we need affordable housing in the community, and I'm not planning to do any building, I'm just asking for a zoning change right now, and so, I guess that's about it. Short and sweet.
Okay, let's see if there's any questions for you. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, that's fine for now, sir.
Okay.
You have a little time at the end, if you want to have some rebuttal.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, so we'll go through public testimony now, and the first person I have is Sandra Breck, is it Breckenridge? Have you in opposition? Would you like to testify? You're, you're, just state, go ahead and state your name and address.
Sandra Breckenridge, 914 East Honeysuckle Glen Court.
Okay, and you swear the testimony you're going to give us will be the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. You have five minutes, thanks.
The reason why I came to this hearing was because we just recently moved to our present location, and it's off of Day Road. It's, and the reason why we bought the house was because it was a quiet road, and it had a cul-de-sac. And our house is right at the corner there, the cul-de-sac, and so, I have, I have visual access to that property on the, on the Day Road, and I hate to think about the feeling of the community changing, because right now, we're, I'm starting to meet my neighbors and, and develop some kind of a community feeling there, and I feel like if they build a lot of houses on that property there, the feeling of the community will change, and the potential for increased traffic and increased people running around there during the night, or whatever, could, could increase. I'm just worried that it's going to change the environment of why I bought the house in the first place. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much. Is this Cindy Unruh I have? Am I reading this right, or?
Yeah, that's Mark.
Right, you're in favor and don't wish to testify. Okay, thank you. And, let's see, Dorothy Clark, I have you in opposition, and you do not wish to testify, or would you like to now? No, okay, thank you very much. I have Michael Clark in opposition, you would like to testify? Okay, come on up, sir. State your name and address. Just right there, state your name and address there.
Michael Clark, 1020, 1055 East Day Road, Red Roof.
Okay, sir, and you swear the testimony you're going to give us will be the whole truth, and nothing, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
The reason we bought that place, right there, because it is at a dead-end road, and it's quiet. You put 16 units in there, and my quality of life is going to hell in a handbasket, because the people don't just bring in two adults, they bring in their kids, they bring in their dogs, there's parties all night long. I know these kind of residences, I've been around them before. The other major concern I have is water. Hoffman Water District is an inferior-quality water district. When the summer sprinklers go on, my water pressure goes down. All I've got feeding my house underneath that pavement right there, from across the street to the, to the, it'd be south, is a piece of 3/4-inch poly pipe, coming off of a meter. I've got a marginal feed as it is, and you start dropping that pressure, I really notice it. The Hoffman Water District has not been a good outfit to deal with, anytime I've had problems, the man that comes out is quite cantankerous about it, and I don't think that they can handle the additional pressure of 16 units, either personal-wise, or, or as far as their equipment is concerned. The other thing I have to request here is, which way are they going to come out of those two lots? Are they going to go onto Timber, or are they going to come Are they going to go onto Timber, or are they going to come out onto Day Road? Or is that up in the air, up, up to the building?
It's not designed yet, yeah.
Okay. If they come out on Day Road, we have a problem. The traffic, as it is right now, there's no turnaround, and we get looky-loos that come down, it says dead end up at the end, but they come down, and there's no place to turn around, so they have to turn around in somebody's driveway. Then comes the, the city garbage trucks and the, and the other, other large vehicles, whether it be utilities or whatever, they have to turn around in somebody's driveway, there's no turnaround. So, that's going to increase the amount of pressure on the end of that road as well, as far as our solitude, that we, what little we have now. So, that's my two major beefs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, Bob Sandow. Come on down, sir. State your name and address.
Yeah.
Go ahead and state your name and address.
90 Day Road, Bob Sandow.
Okay, and of course, you swear the testimony you're about, you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Okay, thank you.
I had a lot of questions, but Mike just about hit every one I wanted.
That's okay.
About the traffic, the noise, no turnarounds, and I, the only thing he didn't mention was that road is a little single-lane road right now. I mean, it's just, it's a horrible situation for traffic, if they come in on Day Road. And then, my other question was with Hoffman Water, too, exactly, and he's already brought that up, so that's about all I can say, is I just, I'm really against it, because it's just 16 people, 32 people, maybe, in that little area. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Question, if I could? You have a question for him, or I thought you meant for staff? Yeah, I do. Okay, I'm sorry, sir, come on, I thought you meant the staff.
I didn't hear you.
Mr. Clark is the Red Roof.
Yep.
Could you use that pointer, right there, the, the mouse, and show me? I don't know what color your roof is, could you?
Okay.
Which one is yours?
Okay, come right down there to, to where the Red Roof is, come over, now come caddy, now straight down, right there, to the right, there.
Got it.
That's my property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. And one, one quick point, point of clarification here, too. If this was approved tonight, he does have the option to put in up to 16 units, as the staff said. Now, we don't know what his plans are, so it's anywhere, anywhere in between there, I'm just clarifying that.
That's the problem, he isn't committed, and you give him an R8, and then later on, he can blast you with it.
And we're aware of that.
Mr. Chair, is there, if it was approved to R8, and they decided to put in 16 units, or whatever the case may be, would that be a matter that would come before us, and the public would be aware of it, so they could...
No, I think it's by right, you know, you'd have to go through all the, you know, through Building Department, and Fire, and Public Works, and all that, as far as access, but he would have the, the right, if he could meet all the requirements, you know, to get the permits and, and meet all the setbacks, he could put in 16 units.
Thank you.
Correct?
The only thing you would see is if there was a subdivision of the property.
Oh, for the pocket housing, right.
Yeah, so if, if they were trying to divide it up in a way that's conveying legal ownership, and had to subdivide the property, you would see that.
Right, but for a denial, we'd have to find something that was against the...
Sure.
That was against planning or public welfare to, to deny it, but yeah, right, you'd have to do a subdivision, okay. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Okay, I have Cindy Mitchell. Would you like, okay, come on up.
Cindy Mitchell, I live at 905 Day Road.
Okay, and you also swear that any testimony you give us will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, thank you.
My husband couldn't be here, because he doesn't get off work until 6:00. We have lived on Day Road for 29 years, I can't believe it. I have seen everything in that neighborhood, everything. We started out with, as a dirt road, with nobody, we had a horse pasture across from us, it got developed, we went through a lot of problems with a developer, we got a half a street, not a full street, they got sued on their side, we didn't get sued on our side, and then they want us to hook up to it, and pay an exuberant fee, which I don't have to do till I sell, apparently, and then we got some property that, on the other side, towards the Honeysuckle side, some kind of funny stuff was done with that property, now I have a pole barn next door to me, and the one on the corner has so many people in it, I don't even know who lives there, there's so many cars out front. I'm nothing against people renting, I know housing is expensive, that's why I've not moved, but if you're doing the parking based on bedrooms per unit, then our whole street's in trouble, because it is loaded with people. On the corner, we can have 10, 15 cars, just from those two houses, and when you're trying to get down the street, even to my own driveway, I'm only three houses in, I gotta wait on Honeysuckle Drive for people to move out of the way. When the snowplow comes through there, they don't move their vehicles, they don't mow their lawns, they have their trash out there, I've talked to the owner a few times, now there's more kids living there, I understand, they don't have jobs, or school, or whatever, and you can't afford to live on your own, but that, that's a problem, is a lot of people packed on Day Road. There's no place to turn around, as Mr. Clark has said. So, they used to use my driveway, and I said, "No more," so that's why I have a sign up on my mailbox, I'm tired of it, because I have cars turning in my driveway 24 hours a day, some days, and I try to sleep every now and then, and it just doesn't work. Also, the duplexes on the other side of me, there's only three duplexes there, so eight units, right? Six, whatever it is, okay, A through F. So, that, that property, we had some trouble with, often with renters in there, the biggest problem now is their fence is falling down to the ground. It has not been replaced, ever, it was stapled the last time I complained about it, it's now falling on the ground, there's no even, it's a fire hazard, the weeds have grown, the noxious weeds, that has not been taken care of, so, you know, really, when you drive around the neighborhood, we have everything, it's not the best-looking neighborhood, in my opinion, and we have, because we have so much of everything there, it used to be county, and then they kind of sandwiched off parts of it, and we still have people from, is it Shoreline, on the other side of Timber Lane, that also use Day Road, because their houses, the back faces Day Road, and they take their boats and stuff through there, and their motorcycles, and all that kind of stuff. So, and then we've got Timber Lane Estates, right on the corner, at the end of Timber Lane, they have access to Day Road with their boats, and their trailers, and their motor homes, and I think the one even next to me would have access if, if the gate worked now, because I think it's just so dilapidated, they can't go open it anymore. So, the other thing is, on rentals, I know housing is difficult, I really understand that truly, but you don't get single families renting these places anymore, they bring in everybody. I don't, again, I don't know how many people are living next door to me, there's so many vehicles, so many people coming and going from there, it creates a lot of noise, because they're coming and going all night long, for whatever reason that they're doing, again, trying to, to get down the street, because there's only one, one single lane going down there. The other thing, wrote my notes here, was the Hoffman Water, and it really, it's, it's not a good water, I mean, it's great water tasting, but the system is old, it seems like they tried to get, hook up, you know, across the 15th Street, that division there, and there wasn't enough pressure, or whatever the deal was back then. We've had different owners have the system, nobody wants it, because it's old, so if you have a potential of 16 units, and if you're counting like flushes, I used to work for a engineering firm, that, that's going to affect us, what are you, that has nothing to do with water in your yard, it's flushes per person, and all that other good stuff, and all the things that you do in your house, so it, it, it will affect us, period. I did look up what Mr. Unruh has done, because there's Google out there now, so, nothing against Mr. Unruh at all, I wish I could afford to buy property and do stuff, I just don't have the guts to do it, because I've seen what people do to rentals around me, so, but, you know, kind of have a, understand where we're coming, oh crap, understanding where we're coming from, because there's the unknown out there, and we have to live with the unknown, you don't, you live in Apple. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Elsa Powers? Yeah, come on up, ma'am. Just state your name and address.
Elsa Powers, 944 East Honeysuckle Glen Court.
All right, and you swear the testimony you're going to give us will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. The people before me have presented a, a lot of the points that I wanted to do, that it's a quiet residential neighborhood, generally. There'll be an increase in traffic with, with the potential of the 16 homes, you figure out that two people per, per home, that's the potential of 32 more cars in the neighborhood. Parking right now is limited, as the lady before me said, the people on the corner of Honeysuckle, I mean, of Day and Honeysuckle, the cars there are, there's a lot of them, and in the wintertime, it is a problem for the snowplows, it's a problem for us to get in and out, because they don't clear out their vehicles, they leave them parked and snowed in, plowed in. Worried about the effect on our home values, and it's, I just want to let you know that I'm strongly opposed to this change in zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Joanna Pearlie?
That's one.
One, sorry.
That's okay. Everybody wants to make an O out of that U.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Wanda Pearlie, 944 East Honeysuckle Glen Court.
Okay, and I, and I know you'll tell the truth, but I need to swear you in. You swear the testimony you're going to give us will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, thank you.
And as everybody has stated before, we have to look at the worst-case scenario on this, and, again, 32 cars. We've had at that corner of Honeysuckle Drive and Day Road, up to eight vehicles, just right in the beginning of it, and in the wintertime, it's only one car. The other aspect on this is, what kind of housing is going to go in? If it's low-income housing, just as some people don't, may not be aware of, in a half-a-mile circle around this area, we have 11 sex offenders. The low income, that could mean that we'll have more, and that's a concern to me. Nothing against the owner. If it gets scheduled off to an R8, and he sells the property, maybe he doesn't plan to do that, but he sells it to another developer, I've seen what they've done on Lunsford, that they have this huge, long line of housing, just goes straight down, I wouldn't want to see that there. And, again, the area just really can't sustain up to 16 units that's around there. We live in the cul-de-sac, so we're always getting turnarounds coming down through the cul-de-sac, so that's what all I have to say, I agree with everyone else before me, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Goodwin? Is Kathleen out there? Let's see, I have you as, don't wish to testify, but in opposition? Just checking to see if you changed your mind, okay? Okay, thank, thank you, okay. Okay, then I hope I get this right. Gwynne, is it Avnasek, or Chek, Avnech? Hovnek? Oh, Hovnek, okay. Opposed, do not wish to testify, and Todd, same thing? Would you like to testify? Okay, thank you. Then I have Donna Souza. Okay, and you're opposed, but you would like to testify? Okay, that's no problem, that's why I checked. Come on down.
My name's Donna Souza, 915 East Honeysuckle Glen Court.
Okay, and you swear the testimony you're going to give us will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. I'd like to use the pointer, oop, now I've already messed it up, please go back.
They can fix it.
I think we're most affected by this, because our property is right here, we built this house in 1996, right here. We've got the stop sign here, we've got the grassy swale. I'm going to point out a few points, but I agree with everything everybody else said. First of all, this area, this was built incorrectly, it was a duplex lot, we looked at it when we first built. It was a duplex lot, they built one, this one is a duplex. Then they built this pole building, put a ramp across, called it a mother-in-law's quarters. This was funny business, we, I don't know if you all know the story, and I won't have to go into it in my five minutes, but then they split it, sold it separately. We have people parking in the handicap drive, where the handicap ramp, to go into, off the sidewalk, that's where they park. There's two driveways for about six families that live there, so that problem, you couldn't get a fire engine down there, you can't get a plow down there, because there's not enough parking, they park even where the hand, they drive, park right there, where you can't get down if you're handicapped, and I am disabled, so that's been an objection. So, we have already a problem there. We have a unique neighborhood, this is a single-lane road, ends here, you cannot turn a fire engine around. We're going to have to extend...
Down, day, drop-down day.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Ends here, in a property that has a big fence, and a gate, keep the gate closed. There is nowhere for a fire engine to turn around, except in my backyard, maybe, okay? All the water, when it rains, and I, we've been there since 1996, all the water in that neighborhood comes and goes right into my grassy swale. I planted trees there that absorb water, and we do our best, it's very deep there, all the water comes there, a lot of water gets absorbed in this area, what's going to happen when that becomes concrete? All that water's going to drain into our property. We had to bring in dump loads and dump loads of dirt, in order to bring our property up high enough, because this whole area, our whole cul-de-sac, thank you, is, I don't think, I'll have to go back, our whole cul-de-sac was engineered incorrectly when it was first built. So, we bought the last lot. When we bought it, there's a reason why it sat there vacant for a long time, we had to pay a fortune to have all the grassy swale put in, the, you know, the big hole in the ground with the drain, all this was engineered incorrectly, so all the drainage is incorrect. We get everything from Day Road, it's supposed to go into a grassy swale over here, it does not, unless the whole street went to flooding. So, we're getting it all, plus we have the traffic that these people cannot turn around, there's, everybody's parked in the driveways, in the handicap thing, nobody can turn around. They come, and they're young people, they go flying around here, I have no fence here or anything, this is my house, I have windows all the way around my house, it's constant, these kids, flying, and I'm the crazy old lady that's in the backyard yelling, "Slow down, you guys," I mean, they'll fly down these roads, and this, at times, has even been a little drag race place, but these are all, almost all homeowners, these are not rentals. We've seen what happens when they put a rental. It's awful. These people don't have any place to park in the winter, so the snowplow comes, we don't have any room, at all, and let alone if there was a fire, God help us. The traffic is already out of control, these people, like she said, there's a gate here, at any time, we can end up with a, with a way for people to drive in this way, there's a gate, none of this is kept good, kept up, none of this is kept up, we've often thought about fire, because they don't keep it very well kept up. There's a new roof on this house, plus there's been a lot of misinformation about that, this house here just put a new roof in, on the other day. So, my husband, Mark Souza, and Mike, they received some information that the renter here is, put earnest money on this property, then the ex-wife of the previous owner of this property lives here. She has lived there for 30 years, she doesn't want this developed, that she had put earnest money down on this property, in order to keep it as it is, which is gorgeous, filled with deer, it's absolutely lovely. They already chopped down all the trees, and then, you know, you have a right to do whatever you want with your property, until it affects mine. My house is going in the market in about a week and a half, two weeks, maybe. This is really scary, this is our nest egg. This is right... This is right out. I'm gonna show you again, this is my home. This is right outside my back door. I'm very concerned. I've been there and I've stayed there for all this time, and built equity in my home, a large amount of equity in my home. I don't want to move.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mark Souza, did you want to come up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, come on up, sir. Just state your name and address like your wife, yeah?
I live at nine fifteen East Honeysuckle Glen Court.
Okay, and you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, it is.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I'm opposed for the development. This area here, if I use the mouse. There is duplexes here already in this lot. There's duplexes just to the east of Mike Clark's lot here. We've put more duplexes on the vacant trade lot here, and potentially more duplexes on this lot here. That's a lot of duplexes in a small community. The street here that we have here for Day, there's no, it's a single lane, it's not a double-wide. Very narrow, and that, for them to have any access for public vehicles, like the fire department, city snowplow, very limited, and with all the extra vehicles and parking, if they have access, I'm sorry, where's the mouse? There we go. If they have access on the south side of the lot on Day, it's gonna be a lot of hustle-bustle in this little intersection right here. My, my bedroom is right off the backside of Day, as well as my other neighbor, their bedrooms are right off the backside of Day. Having the potential with sixteen vehicles and all the people, again, too many people in a small area. The residents of these duplexes, I hear them at night. I go to work at five AM, I get up at three AM in the morning. I go to bed early, at like eight, nine PM. People up, talking with the, carrying on on their back porch. Just, it's a nice, quiet neighborhood, and if they have animals and dogs barking, not a tranquil area no more. And the, the part about with the, having too many people is just against me, goes against me, and I feel that having, able to have people that are sex offenders and low-income is detrimental to the value of our neighborhood. It's my opinion, I truly oppose it with all my heart.
Okay, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Brian Taylor? Have you opposed, do not wish to testify? Okay. Okay, uh, let's see, I think this is, is it Roy Wargie? Okay, come on up, sir.
My name is Roy Wargie, twenty twenty-two East Court Lane Avenue, Court Lane.
Okay, sir.
I've had that property for seventy years.
All right, sir, now just, real quick, sir, just one thing. I know you'll tell us the truth, but I have to go through protocol here. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the, the truth and the, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Only on, only on my street. Nothing on this here.
Okay. Okay.
Do you swear to tell the truth? Do you swear to tell the truth? Swear to tell the truth, the chairman?
Well, yes.
Okay, so you swear to tell the truth, okay. We'll kinda have to do that like on Perry Mason, where we swear you in. But go ahead, sir.
I've had that property for seventy years. And there's stop trying failure there, continuous, day and night. And the police department has told time and time again that they would do something about it. They're doing absolutely nothing. And I can't tell you when, but one of these days, there's gonna be an accident there, and they do, it's gonna be a deadly one. Because they go through there, boom, they don't even slow down. And they're doing it twenty-four hours a day. Now, somebody better get on the ball and do something about that. And they've taken the school crossing sign down that was there, and I object to that. I don't know whether they did, but they got a little cone over there, now ready to drop in, a faraway stop. And I don't agree with the fact that they've taken that school zone sign away, or school crossing. That sign should be there. And I've offered my driveway, or my home, where the police can see and see what's going on there, twenty-four hours a day if they want to. But I'd like to see something done about that before there's a deadly crash there. And it's gonna happen. I can't tell you when, but if it does, it's gonna be deadly. And there's kids riding, uh, psychos around there that don't even look like they're old enough to operate one, with no helmets on, and that, that's not right. I want to see something done about it. And if the police accept you, I think to see that there's something done about it and corrected. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, let's see, next I have Carol Taylor. In opposition, do not wish to testify, but you can sure change your mind if you'd like to. Okay, come on down. Okay, just state your name and address.
My name's Carol Taylor, I live at nine twenty-one Honeysuckle Glen Court.
Okay, and you swear the testimony you're about to give us will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay.
I have two main objections to the development. Quality of life and the value of my property. I think that both are gonna be diminished considerable. I live on the, on the cul-de-sac, right directly behind on the south side of Day Road. So, the, the people are gonna be coming in and out of there, like I say, sixteen units, with, I would say, an average of thirty-two cars. That's unacceptable, and because Day Road is a single-lane road, where are they gonna send their kids to play? My guess would be on our cul-de-sac. They just come right out there, and there's a whole area for them to play and run or do whatever, and it's gonna impact us a lot. Also, the property says plus or minus two point oh five acres. Though, there is a home on one quarter of that land, and they have, they're just finishing up putting a new roof on, so I don't believe that they're gonna tear that down. So, if it's zoned, it's really one and three-quarter acres that I see for development. And I don't know how you can put that many units in one and three-quarter acres. So, I'm opposed to it. I agree with pretty much everything that's been said here tonight, and I'm hoping that it doesn't pass. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, Cody Taylor? Would you like to testify? Just go ahead and state your name and address.
Uh, my name's Cody Taylor, I'm at nine twenty-one East Honeysuckle Glen Court.
All right, sir, and you swear the testimony you're about to give us will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, you have five minutes.
I mean, everybody's hit on all the points, I mean, the traffic, you know, and there's cars everywhere. I just moved back from the city to get away from everything, you know? And I think one of the biggest things would be, if you put in this, you're gonna have to do all this construction, you know, how long of labor you're gonna have, how loud that's gonna be, and how are we gonna get around if you're putting in new water mains and new, tearing up the road and putting in sidewalks and doing everything? These single-lane roads can barely get one car on there. How are you even gonna have it if there's construction? We can't even get through now with a bunch of people on the end. You know, I just don't see how any of this could benefit our small community. And like I said, I enjoy that, there's plenty of wildlife, and there's plenty of good people living there. There's no reason to add a lot of commotion. And, uh, you know, I mean, everybody said pretty much spot-on, it's, it's too small. It is surrounded by single-family homes. You know, there are a few apartments, or, you know, duplexes or what have you there, and they're already, you know, a big enough problem. And as being young myself, I know how that goes. And, you know, I have been there before and been a punk kid probably to somebody, and, you know, it's, they're not gonna care. You know, they're gonna do what they wanna do, and it's just not, you know, it's not what we want around us. And I just don't see how trying to build up this area would help benefit at all. And especially if we have, you know, if it is gonna be low-income or anything like that, whether it is or not, that could really just be detrimental to everybody's, you know, way of life. So, you know, I'm very opposed to it, and I don't see any reason to have it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Right, Nancy Elifson?
Elifson.
Elifson, I'm sorry. Uh, would you like to testify? I have you opposed but would not wish, do not wish to testify, or would, would you like to? Okay, come on down.
Nancy Elifson, nine two two East Honeysuckle Glen Court.
All right, Nancy, and you swear the testimony you're about to give us will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes. I pretty much agree with what everybody has said. Uh, I do wanna bring up the fact that if we have like some kind of apartment building with sixteen units, possible thirty-two cars, how many people would be hard to tell? But not only are we talking about the people who live there, we're talking about the people who come to visit them. So, they, that's not that big of an area, so if they would put in a large unit, they'd have parking for their people, and then where are all the visitors gonna park? On Day Road, or come into the cul-de-sac? We have a, I would pretty much say, a non-crime area. It's, I live on the cul-de-sac. We're kind of remote, in the middle of residential neighborhood, but we're cut off, kind of, because we have this nice little quiet cul-de-sac. The only children, really, that live on the cul-de-sac are two of our grandchildren, who are with us quite a bit. Other than that, there's no children on, on that cul-de-sac. So, when we're talking about the quality of your, your neighborhood or your life, if, I agree with Carol that we're gonna have a lot of kids coming over and playing in that cul-de-sac. Also, if the, the people come to visit, then they say, "Oh gee, we didn't know this was here." So, we have potential of more crime. So, not only do we have congestion, we have more activity going on in our quiet area. Most of the people who live on that cul-de-sac are, are older. So, we don't necessarily want a bunch of kids running around. So, um, I guess I agree with everybody else in bringing out those points about, that everybody else has and strongly disagree and believe it will definitely change our neighborhood, which is very nice now. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next, I'll do the best I can here, I think. It's, is it Nathan Cervantes? Oh. Uh, have you opposed, do not wish to testify, but you certainly can if you'd like? Okay. Come on up, state your name and address.
My name's Nathan Cervantes, nine three four East Honeysuckle Glen Court.
Okay, and you swear the testimony you're about to give us will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay.
Well, first of all, we just moved in the neighborhood. July third was our year. And the whole reason we moved to this area was, it's quiet, it's nice. We came from a place where people pack, you know, ten, fifteen people per house. I know it probably won't be that way, but I've seen how, you know, duplexes and those type of dwellings can become. You know, it is the, the great thing about this country is, you know, we're able to, you know, own private property, and you are able to pretty much do whatever you want with it. Doesn't mean you should, you know, should, but, you know, it's a nice peaceful neighborhood, and just based off the renters we got across the street, the renters that are on the edge of, you know, Honeysuckle Drive and Day, you know, look at the type of people that duplexes, look, look what it attracts. You know, would you guys like a duplex, you know, sixteen duplexes next to your guys' property in Athol? Probably not. So, all right, that's all I gotta say, strongly opposed.
All right, thank you. Uh, Rick Bennett?
My name is Rick Bennett, I live at ten ninety-five East Timber Lane in Court Lane.
Okay, sir, and you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, I just, at first, want to go on the record saying that I am very much against this proposal. The fact that he has a piece of property that he thought was zoned one thing, and all of a sudden it wasn't, is not our problem to remedy. And so now we're having to stick up for ourselves, and I guess that's what this meeting is all about. But I live on Timber Lane, so just to the north and two houses over. The reason I bought that piece of property right there, there's about eight of us on one-acre lots. And that's what drew me to the neighborhood, is that it was quiet, I didn't have a bunch of neighbors fifteen feet away from my bedroom window. And the quality of life that I was looking for when I bought that piece of property will be greatly diminished if this is approved. The other thing that has been mentioned that I wanna also concur, and that is the fact that our water district is pretty poor. There's been new owners, a couple of years ago, they doubled the rates on us. Last year, it went up another sixty percent. So, our water is what used to be very affordable. You know, when you have one-acre lot, we have a lot of grass. My water bill in the winter, I mean, in the summertime, is two hundred dollars a month. This is gonna add to that. There's more people, there's more maintenance, there's more opportunity or more reason for them to raise the rates again. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a shame that it went up a hundred percent and then sixty percent again, all within two years. And I see that happening again. There was also the, the point that was brought up regarding the water pressure. I can't water my lawn during the day, I have to do it at nighttime, because there's not enough water pressure to run the sprinklers. And so that's another big issue. Another, a major concern for me is my property value. Who wants to see their property value go down? When you change the dynamic of a neighborhood, the consequence of that will be either one way or another, depending upon what, how you make the change. This in no way is gonna make my property value go up. It's gonna make it harder for me to sell my property, because who wants to live next to a neighborhood in a street now with proposals gonna have up to another hundred, hundred and fifty cars a day going through in front of my house? It's already busy enough. The police already put, about once a month, they put the little speed sign thing out there, because of the people that drive so fast. Now you're gonna put a hundred more cars up and down my street if this gets approved. I think that's outrageous. And I think that there's enough of us here. I don't know what the protocol is exactly, when we find out what you're gonna decide and what you do with our information, but I can tell you that from what I've heard from this group, we're, we're pretty unanimous in our thought and our, and our, our passion about the area that we live, the quality of life that we enjoy, and we move there for a reason. And now we've got something that's gonna, because somebody else wants to do something that they think is important to them, now it affects my quality of life. I don't think that's right. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions?
Okay, sir, thank you very much. And we'll be making the decision tonight, as part of the hearing. Okay, Amanda Cervantes? Okay, Amanda Cervantes, have you opposed? Would you like to testify, or, okay? Uh, Lori Green, would you like to testify?
No.
Okay, you're opposed, do not wish to testify. All right, that's my list. Is there anyone else, uh, I, I missed here that would like to testify tonight? Okay, Mr. Unruh, you have some time to come up for rebuttal if you'd like to, sir.
Well, I guess I'm the least popular guy in the room. That's my wife talking. As far as the water goes, there's a six-inch water line that runs through the property. And it runs from Honeysuckle to Day Road. According to, uh, the Hoffman Water Districts I talked to today, I never knew there was any problems with everybody in the neighborhood about the water. You know, I have to say, you guys, that, you know, if...
Excuse me, sir, you need to address your comments up here. Thank you.
If, you know, the thing of it is, it's kinda like everyone's enjoying that property as a park. And it's private property, you know, and that's what it kinda boils down to. You know, when, I mean, when you, when you buy something and then, you know, everybody considers it as a private park because there's deer there, whatever, you know? That's what, kinda what's going on here in the neighborhood. You know, I'm right next to a door to apartment complexes. There's, the zoning across the street is, is, uh, R eight. So, you know, there's not much, I mean, you know, everyone says they don't wanna live next to apartment buildings. Well, that's what's right next door. You know, so, anyway, you know, I'm sorry you guys are all upset. Thank you.
Okay, sir, thank you.
Mr. Chair, um, I would be, uh, happy to float a motion and I would be pleased to make findings.
If, uh, the vote, say, goes the way that I would propose.
And there's, there's eleven findings that Planner, uh, Tammy Stroud pointed out. There's eleven findings that we need to make. And, uh, in my opinion, nine of them are supportable. But two, uh, very important ones, B eight and B eleven, are not supportable. Uh, B eight is, uh, a fit with the comp plan. And B eleven is, I think, the biggest of all, which is the finding, uh, that we would have to make that this would not adversely affect the neighborhood. And I think the, my personal sense, as well as, you know, the preponderance of the testimony in this room, is that, uh, it would certainly affect, uh, the neighborhood. You know, the topographies there, the, you know, the utilities, although questionable, you know, the, 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 the city's utility folks say, uh, it's supportable. But it does, uh, the comp plan, uh, the, the statement in the staff report that says that, uh, you know, lower-density development becomes more prominent as you move north, and you can see that right on this, this picture. And, uh, and then, uh, you know, the, the other, B eleven, uh, the protection of the neighborhood, uh, folks, some have been there twenty-nine years, uh, property values, uh, uh, the character of the neighborhood and, and so forth. Some people have just moved in there and made a key, one of the biggest decisions of their life based on what they see on the ground. And, uh, so, uh, motion would be, uh, that, uh, you know, I, not to support this based on B eight and B eleven, uh, not being supportable.
All right, so, we have a motion, need to do some findings, but a motion for denial from Ingles. So is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Messina. We haven't done this for a while. Do we go ahead and take a vote and then do the findings? It's been a while since we did this.
Or we could have the city attorney.
Here's what we have, the findings, or we have the attorney do the findings. Are you proposing the city attorney do the findings?
That would be fine with me. And I, I think it's as simple as to say that, again, I think all of the findings other than B eight and B eleven are indeed supportable. You know, the topography's okay, the utilities are okay, uh, those kinda issues, you know, are fine. But, you know, the comp plan fit based on the statement that, you know, uh, the density for the area is, is more, uh, um, lower as you go north where this is located. And as you can see in the, uh, the map there, uh, as well as, you know, the finding of B eleven, uh, based on the testimony and, uh, what I can glean from the staff report, that this would indeed, uh, affect the character of the neighborhood. Is that enough for the legal office to fashion, uh, findings?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Question, Mr. Chair, a, a question for staff. And just for the audience, clarification. In single-family housing, what would be the maximum density if we kept it at R three that they could build to?
Eleven thousand five hundred per dwelling unit. Uh, the total square footage of the lot is eighty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety-eight, so...
Somewhere around seven units, give or take.
Seven, single-family dwellings could be facing either Day Road or Timber Lane. With frontages in both directions.
Correct. The engineering department said that if they develop, they could choose Day Road or Timber Lane to access.
Creatively, six or seven homes could be outfitted to face either direction. Instead of all impacted by Day, we could move to Timber as well.
The other is that you need seventy-five feet of frontage on a public street for a single-family dwelling, so...
In R three?
Correct.
I thought it was, just for point of discussion, I thought it was fifty, or is that in the R twelve? Is that a...
From the, uh, R eight and up.
R eight and up, okay.
But the R three and R one requires seventy-five feet.
Yeah, thanks, just for my own mind, yeah. Understanding, all right. Yeah, and whether they could get that many units in there remains to be seen because you got the seventy-five-foot frontage plus, you know, roads and rights away and so forth with, within there that would have to meet code. Any other questions or discussion?
Uh, Commissioner Ingles, I, I, I'd like to add to your, uh, motion to, or at least have you, uh, consider, uh, findings B nine, of course. Uh, there is that comment that comes from, uh, Chris Bates, engineer, engineering project manager, in regards to this street, uh, the very tail end at paragraph item number one. This is on page, uh, five of, of, of the staff report. It does say there that, uh, the split arrangement where there's, excuse me, you know, split between either Day or Timber, uh, that arrangement does not meet the city standards as well. So I wanna bring that to your attention. I don't know if you wanna revise your motion to include that or, or not, but I...
Commissioner Ward, I think that's a great, uh, observation and, and finding. And, uh, I would amend the motion to say that of eleven findings, um, I stand corrected and, uh, I think there is, and we heard in the testimony, a traffic issue and a lack of a cul-de-sac issue at the end of Day Road. And there are some, some very real, uh, traffic issues. And so I think, uh, if we could ask the legal office to take that on board as well and make a note in the finding that there is a shortcoming, uh, in the street arena as well, I would amend that motion.
Tammy?
So, um, I think the way that, that, that comment was met, that as it sits today, it doesn't meet city standards. With development, they'd be required to bring it up to standard. So were development to occur, it would meet standard at that point in time, so...
Yeah, you're talking about the section of roadway in front of their, their property.
That's correct.
Okay, any other comments? All right, so I think we're ready to vote on the motion. Then the mo, uh, the motion is for denial of the request. Uh, roll call, Shanna.
Fleming?
Denial. Aye.
Yes, yes is for denial.
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Messina?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Rumpler?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Okay, so that's unanimous, I guess. What is, ZC two dash fifteen, uh, is, is denied. Now, just for the, I, for everyone's benefit here, as, as you heard the discussion, the property still can be developed within the R three, uh, guidelines. And also, the applicant has the ability, if he decides to, he can, uh, uh, what do I wanna say?
Appeal.
Appeal. That's the word I was looking for. He can appeal our decision to the city council. That's, and that's up to him. And he has, is it ten days, I think, from publishing?
It would be ten days after the approval or the notice of decision is, is mailed.
Right. And that'll be a while when you do the findings. I guess it'll be the next meeting, wouldn't it?
The next meeting.
Yeah, so at our August meeting, we'll approve the findings for the denial. So you'd have, you'd have ten days after that, sir, if you'd have decided you wanted to appeal it to the city council. Okay, so we have one more hearing tonight. Let's see. The applicant is CDA Enterprises LLC. This is three five zero two North Fruitland Lane. This is a request for a proposed zone change from R seventeen...
Good job, John.
...to C seventeen. And this is also a quasi-judicial hearing, and this is ZC dash four dash fifteen. Do any commissioners have a conflict to declare on this one?
Well, I...
Okay. Whenever you're ready, Sean, go ahead. Okay, let the room clear out.
Okay, and as Brad had mentioned, um, the applicant is CDA Enterprises LLC. This is a request for a zone change from R seventeen to C seventeen. It's a, a portion of a parcel measuring two-point-one-six acres, which is east of Fruitland Lane, north of Niner Avenue, and west of US ninety-five. That reiterates the point. This is the aerial photo of the property. You can see it's outlined here in yellow. Um, for the benefit of those who are sitting newly on our commission, um, in the past, in March of two thousand and thirteen, there was a request made by the applicant for commercial parking in the area. Prior to that, um, it's important to note that, that there was mini-storage along here. Um, there was two banks of mini-storage, and there was a home here, which is a thirty-five oh two, which acted as the, uh, resident caretaker's unit for that. So, uh, that's some of the reasoning behind the property being Zone C seventeen. Since then, uh, the property has developed. In the two years, uh, there's been an amazing amount of development there. This is now the Golden Corral right here, as well as Buffalo Wild Wings, which has been built. Um, with that approval, they did, to cement their approval, within one year, they did the construction of the parking lot, which, uh, made the special use permit valid in perpetuity unless, um, they were to remove that use. Uh, if you take a quick look in your staff report, you can see that, uh, there's a, a list here of zone changes and special use permits in the area that have been approved or denied. And as you can see, they've all been approved. Here's some photos of the subject property. Looking, um, the southwest corner looking north along Fruitland. This is the developed parking lot that we're just looking at from above, looking southwest. And then this is a close-up of the, the remaining pad of the area that they're asking for, the zone change. So as Tammy had went through, there are the same findings that need to be made for a zone change. These are, are the findings. First is that, is this proposal, is it or is it not in conformance with the comprehensive plan policies? Uh, this is the Fruitland District transition. Here is the map from the comprehensive plan and the definition of transition. Get my mouse to work here. Here is the subject property. It is within the transition area. I have the Fruitland Today information from the comprehensive plan listed. It's also in your staff report, as well as Fruitland Tomorrow. I underlined here where it specifically calls out commercial use. Commercial and manufacturing will continue to expand and care must be used for sensitive land use transition. And the characteristics of Fruitland Commercial, these commercial buildings will remain lower in scale than the downtown core, and native variety trees won't be encouraged along commercial corridors. Also, before we move on, um, in your staff report are the, uh, significant comprehensive plan policies for your consideration. Moving on to finding B nine, is that public facilities and utilities are or are not available and adequate for the proposed use. If you take a look at pages four and five of your staff report, you can see the comments, um, from staff. And those comments all say that the utilities are there and available. Um, one quick note, too, I wanted to let you know is, as you can see, let me go back here real quick. The property, all these dotted lines here, was pretty, um, cut up prior to consolidation of the lot. Uh, the owners, due to utility restraints or constraints and wastewater service of the property, was required to consolidate all those lots together. So that's the reason why for, uh, our legal notice in the paper was extensive. All right, so finding B ten is that the physical characteristics of the site do or do not make it suitable for the request at this time. Uh, the area is generally flat. Um, there is MH eight residential uses abutting to the north and some residential uses across, uh, Fruitland to the west. There's no constraints that would make the subject property unsuitable for, uh, development. There is currently a parking lot, a Tesla charging station, and a vacant pad for future development on the subject property. Okay, so finding B eleven is that the proposal would or would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic, neighborhood character, and/or existing land use. Uh, you can see on pages eight through eleven of your staff report, allow me to catch up here, that those are listed. Chris Bates, um, the information in here states that, uh, US High, uh, US Highway ninety-five and multiple roadway connections that link with other north-south and east-west arterial and collectors, um, do supply the property with enough, uh, traffic control to, to meet demand there. Uh, also neighborhood character, and once again, that's a Fruitland Today from, from the comprehensive plan. So we have a generalized land use map. Um, the subject property here, that's denoted, the bottom portion of this is vacant. Uh, the remaining is of commercial use. You can see that there is a, a mobile home park. Uh, there's a couple of mobile home parks and vacant property, as well as some single-family, uh, detached housing. And, um, this is, is labeled as, as multi-family here, which is a PUD. And commercial to the south. As far as the zoning map goes, you can see, uh, this kind of lighter bluish-green color is MH eight, which is mobile home at eight units per gross acre. Uh, the red is commercial. And this, the yellowish color here, it's actually kind of an orange. It's a little bit see-through. I turned off the picture underneath so that it was a little more legible, is the R seventeen property. There are no proposed conditions, and, uh, proper notice was provided. Also, if you take a look in your staff report, I do list out what the existing R seventeen district is, is all about, as well as the permitted uses and permitted uses by special use permit, as well as the C seventeen zoning district. And Planning Commission must consider this request and make appropriate findings. And Planning Commission must consider this request and make appropriate findings to approve, deny, or deny without prejudice, and your findings worksheet is attached. That concludes my staff report. If there are any questions? Thank you, Sean. Do we have any questions for Sean?
Uh-uh.
Thank you. Excellent job, Sean, but no questions for you.
It's a rare thing.
All right, would the applicant like to come on up? Just go ahead and state your name and address, and I will swear you in.
I guess technically, it's CDA Enterprises LLC, and it's 1719 South Rocky Ridge Drive, Spokane, Washington, and I'm one of the managers, Paul Delay.
Okay. Paul, and then you swear the testimony you're about to give us will be the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yep. So, you know, real quick, this, we've kind of been through an odyssey or a history on this thing, and it's been, you know, it's been a terrific partnership, because we were, we put in the Golden Corral, we put in the Buffalo Wild Wings, we put in ample parking to support those two large, you know, users. So now we're down to that vacant lot. We don't intend to, you know, get rid of the existing parking, and everybody says, well, what are you going to put on that vacant lot? And to tell you the truth, we don't have a user, but I think our end goal would be probably to be an office, you know, either a medical or an office user, because you really can't put a retail that's so, you know, sandwiched back that doesn't have frontage. So without that frontage, I think it's very unrealistic to have a retail user. 2.2 acres of the 6.9 are in this special R17 with the special use permit for parking. So it's, you know, in some ways, it's kind of a, you know, sharp contrast to what we heard, you know, 10, 15 minutes earlier. We're not dropping spot zoning, you know, into a dense residential area. This is commercial area all around it, and it's, and the area that's immediately next to this vacant lot is an eye clinic and a real estate office, and it's zoned C17. So we're going to, and I'm talking about what's south of the vacant lot, right on the corner. I don't know if Sean can pull that up. So we're sandwiched all around by a commercial use.
Referring to this property.
Right. Right, I think it's a real estate office, and then there's also an eye clinic that operates out of there, or an eye ophthalmologist, I think. So, you know, our goal would be to get probably, you know, like I said, an office user of some type, perhaps even a medical, a doctor, a dentist, or something along those lines. And at this point, we don't have a particular user, but that's what our focus is. That's a quick overview.
Okay.
I should add that Dan Davis owns the, Dan Davis Senior owns the mobile home park. I did call him, let him know that, you know, what we're doing, kind of what our plan was, and he was supportive, he didn't, you know, he did not indicate, if you recall last time, for those of you who were on, you know, we put up a fence to specially have some separation between the two users, so...
Recall that.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions for the applicant while he's up here? Okay, I guess, thank you, Paul.
Yep.
All right, the list is a little bit shorter on this hearing. I have one other person, Linda Eaton, neutral. You wish to testify? Come on up, please. State your name and address.
My name is Linda Eaton, and I live at 3535 North Gunner Court.
Okay, and you swear the testimony you're about to give us will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, thanks.
Um...
I can use this to point, it takes a second to get it going.
Oh, there it is. Right there is my mobile home. And I got to say, right off, okay? I came here when Paul Delay was here, and he wanted to do all this, and they were talking about putting up the fence and all that. They did a wonderful job. I'm hoping that the shrubs will come up, and it'll be even better in like five years. And I think that the whole area is much improved, and I just, I have no complaints about that. But it was the way they did it, and how it affected me, because I bought this place in 2011, and it had, it's a 50-year-old, 55-year-old trailer, and it had been totally refurbished, all except the kitchen, but almost entirely. And when they started working on my place, they put the dumpster right adjacent, as close as they could to my place, and day after day, for about two months, I had an earthquake, and my 55-year-old trailer couldn't deal with this. And I found out, as time went on, what happened is, all that beautiful new walls and ceilings and stuff cracked, leaked, and in fact, I had a cupboard that just, it was a brand-new cupboard, and it just came apart from the seams. I was going to bring it in, and I forgot. But, you know, and not to mention things falling off the walls that were hanging. I mean, I didn't, I dealt with it because I just thought, well, whatever, you know, it'll be over pretty soon, and it went on and on and on. And I thought my roof was leaking, so my kids put the white stuff up there for me, and it still leaked even worse as time went on. And I was like, well, so I had three, I was eligible for a program that gives you a roof. They pay for a roof, $5,000, they'll pay for it, so I have to get three inspections. And the first two gave me whatever, and then the third one said, I don't think it's your roof. And he was in and out and all over. He says, I think it's your screws in your siding have worked loose. I paid $400 for him to do that because he couldn't, I needed to get it done, and the program that, if I would have went through them, it just, my place would have just got been worse by the time that worked out, and he didn't, he wasn't under that program. So I paid him $400, him and his friend, and they went around, and it hasn't leaked since. Nothing's gotten any worse now that it's all over. But now they get me a letter saying they're going to do something else. I don't know what they're going to do. I don't know what it's going to mean. And I appreciate having it, the, I mean, to me, the value of the place would be up. I mean, because it's, it looks so much nicer. And, but it's the process that I am concerned about, because I don't want nothing else to happen. I don't want to have to, I, it's the whole place. It looks nice, or at least it did. Now it's got cracks and stain marks, and I don't even remember everything, but thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
And I don't know if it's appropriate, but I say amen to your last judgment.
Oh.
Whatever.
Okay, thank you for your testimony, ma'am. Okay, did anyone else want to testify on this matter that's in the audience? Okay. Paul, you have some time for rebuttal or anything else, if you'd like to come back up?
Yeah, I don't have any, well, I wasn't aware of any issues.
Do you have a question for him?
Yes, I do.
Would you want to come on up? One of the commissioners has a question for you. Just state your name on the microphone there for the record.
Paul Delay.
The fence you put in, does it go all the way to Fruitland?
It does.
So disturbing her residence as a result of putting in a part in another fence is not going to happen because the fence is already there.
No, and as I understand it, her fence, I mean, her residence is directly closest to the Golden Corral dumpster, if I'm tracking, am I tracking correctly?
Well, the dumpster that they have, well, I'm not sure if during when they took out the other stuff and they brought in and put out new stuff, I have no idea how much shaking it was going to do.
Okay, I think we got a...
My question was, is the fence already in all the way from the east side clear to Fruitland?
It is.
Thank you very much.
And I think maybe what she's referring to, maybe I missed this, is the area was completely landscaped because we had certain buffers and...
It might help, you know, after a meeting's over, just the two of you talking.
Yeah, maybe you can chat.
Absolutely.
I think, I think maybe it comes down to the heavy equipment, you know, shaking and vibrating and banging things around right there, maybe that's shaking her trailer.
The big dumpster, and...
Thank you.
Okay.
Ma'am?
He's going to talk to you.
Compassion or something.
He says he'll talk to you after the, after the meeting, talk about your concerns. Did you have anything else, Paul?
Unless you have questions, if you have some questions...
Anything else? Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so that closes public testimony. Is anyone working on a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Messina?
Okay. This matter having come before Planning Commission on June 14, 2015, there being present a person requesting approval of ZC-4-15, a zone change from R17 residential at 17 units per acre to C17 commercial, 17 units per acre. Applicant is CDA Enterprises. Location, a portion of a parcel fronting Fruitland Lane, north of Niner Avenue, west of US Highway 95, measuring 2.16 acres, plus or minus. I will adopt findings B1 through B7, that this proposal is in conformance to the comprehensive plan policies, and I would adopt objective 2.01, business image and diversity, welcome and support a diverse mix of quality professional grade business service industries while protecting existing uses of these types from encroachment by incompatible land uses. Finding B9, that the public facilities and utilities are available adequate for the proposal regarding stormwater, streets, water, sewer, and fire. There's commercial surrounding this particular parcel for a number of years. Finding B10, that the physical characteristics of the site make it suitable for the request at this time. As I mentioned, there is C17 commercial property surrounding this particular parcel. B11, that the proposal would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic, neighborhood character, and/or existing land uses. According to traffic, as I mentioned before, there is commercial businesses there as well. The neighborhood characteristics of this is generally, it's, excuse me, Fruitland is generally known as an area border by commercial uses along US 95, Kathleen to the north, commercial uses on Appleway Avenue south, and the area separated by manufacturing and residential along the west. Again, emphasis that it is commercial around that particular parcel. The Planning Commission pursuant to the aforementioned finds that the request for CDA Enterprises LLC for zone change, as described in the application, should be approved. No special conditions apply.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Messina.
You're welcome.
Let's see if there's a second to your motion.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Rumpler. Any discussion? Okay, Shanna.
Fleming?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Messina?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Rumpler?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
All right, so that's approved unanimously. Zone change to C17, ZC-4-15. Motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Okay, second by Fleming. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed, I take it. So we're adjourned, thank you.